Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake 76, roll call please.
Armenta. Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Condala.
Here.
Juan. Here. Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And as I always beg, please unmute yourselves, so it's not just me saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, God, indivisible, indivisible, in just.
Thank you. We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening? And just as a reminder, please feel free to type those in the Q and A, and then we will read them into the meeting. And we'll wait a couple of minutes so that people have an opportunity to go ahead and do that. The one public comment. That says, I want to thank all teachers and staff for all of their hard work for students. I want to make the, I want to make sure teachers feel safe and are feel appreciated. Thank you for that. Are there any other public comments? Okay, it does not look like it, so we will move on to presentations.
All right, thank you. We have one presentation this evening, which is our return to school second semester update of our hybrid learning schedule and model. So if I could ask Mr. Hanson, please to share his screen. So as we presented at our last board meeting, you know, we had collected all the data. And then within the next two weeks, once we collect the data from the, from parents and then determine which staff were coming back and which ones weren't able to return for personal or health reasons, we were able to determine. Our suggestion was, and our recommendation is to the board is to do a hybrid model, and that was one of the options that was presented, whether, you know, depending on how many students and staff were coming back, what was going to be the safest, most reliable way to come back, whether it was full day or full days, all day, every week, or some type of a hybrid model. So after looking at everything, this is what we're recommending, and our decision-making priorities remain the same as they have for the past almost 11 months, where we are looking at the extended safety, health and welfare of our students and staff, making sure that we provide rigorous and relevant teaching and learning experiences for all students. Our third priority, provide social, emotional learning support, connections and resources. And of course, always communicate clearly, timely and in a transparent manner. And I'm going to ask Ms. Carrera, as she did so well last meeting, to please translate for us for each slide.
Buenas tardes, esta es la, la presentación de la hoja de ruta regreso escolar para el segundo semestre. Como pueden ver aquí las prioridades de decisiones siguen siendo las mismas. Tener en cuenta la seguridad y salud del bienestar extendido para nuestros estudiantes y el personal. Segunda prioridad es para proporcionar experiencias de enseñanza y aprendizaje rigurosas y relevantes para todos los estudiantes. La tercera es proporcionar apoyo de aprendizaje socio-social, emocional, conexiones y recursos. Y la cuarta, comunicar claramente.
So as we, as I stated earlier, our recommendation is to implement a hybrid learning model. And that will start on February 16th, which is the Tuesday after President's Day in two weeks. And we shared that out with the community on January 25th in a letter, basically saying that we were going to a hybrid model, which was a week after the board meeting. And when we gave the overview of what in-person learning was going to look like compared to remote learning, we said that for in-person learning, for families who chose that, it would be returning physically to the school buildings and to the classroom, following the typical school day and schedule. Instructional delivery would be live instruction, simultaneous and alignment with remote learning. So whatever was happening in person was the same thing that the students in the DLA or remote learning were having. We would maintain our mitigation strategies to support the health and safety guidelines that have been outlined. For remote learning, which is our current distance learning academy, students would continue to receive full-time distance learning through their assigned school. They would follow the same typical school day schedule. They would not physically attend school, but would participate in school-based learning virtually from home. And instructional delivery again would be live virtual instruction simultaneously and in line with in-person learning. And both experiences would be from the same teacher.
Vamos a estar dando la recomendación de el modelo de aprendizaje híbrido. dimos esta comunicación como una, una semana después de la última junta de la mesa directiva. Esto incluye que para el 16 de febrero comience el aprendizaje en persona. Que esto significa regresar físicamente a los edificios y clases de las escuelas, seguir los horarios típicos. La instrucción sería en vivo, simultánea y alineada con el aprendizaje remoto. Y vamos a seguir manteniendo las estrategias de mitigación y directrices de salud y seguridad. Y el aprendizaje remoto se va a recibir a distancia, a tiempo completo de su escuela asignada. Seguiremos el horario escolar típico, no asistirán los estudiantes físicamente a la escuela, pero participarán en el aprendizaje basado en la escuela, pero virtualmente desde su hogar. Y de nuevo, la instrucción sería en vivo, virtual, simultánea y alineada con el aprendizaje en persona. Y la instrucción sería de su maestro como si fuera la misma experiencia. Y va a ser la misma experiencia para las dos plataformas.
So as we shared with you, always in our decision-making is we base it on data. And I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna minimize this so I can look at the full screen. These are all of the results from our declaration of intent surveys that we sent out in early January. And as you can see, and we shared this earlier at the previous board meeting, that there are some grade levels that are above 50% that want to come back for in-person learning and some are not. And then as, we just wanted to share that with you, that we have 477 students in total from early childhood up to grade eight that have selected distance learning, and there were 33 families who did not respond. So we, as it indicated in the survey, if we didn't hear from you, that we would, you would be remaining in remote learning, and each of the principals and their staff have followed up with those families. And then in hybrid learning, which is the in-person learning, we have 404 students total. And then families who have chosen to return in person, 306 of them have required transportation. So our rationale for recommending the hybrid model is number one is safety. Keeping those class sizes small better enforces our mitigation practices as well as contact tracing. And as we learned from earlier in the fall, the gradual increase in our success of our FDLA, we started out with a smaller group of facilitated distance learning academy. We, as weeks went on and we got used to routines and students as well as staff and administrators got used to the procedures coming in and out of the building, the transportation, the transitions between classrooms. We were able to add more students as time went on and people got more and more comfortable with the process. So we feel that this is the best way is to start out small. Again, like I said, some grade levels are higher than 50%, and then with all of the staff that are returning, those numbers do increase. And we want to continue to follow our local guidance and Lake County continues to stay in tier one mitigation as indicated in the Illinois Department of Public Health Statistics. As well as staffing, as you're going to see very soon when the board approves the personnel report, we do have several leaves of absences, retirements and resignations. And we need time to hire, to onboard, to train and provide those teachers with the adequate resources as substitutes. So we felt that, you know, moving it back to February 16th as well as doing a hybrid model was just the best way to get the most quality programming and again, decision-making to rigorous and relevant teaching and learning experiences.
Como siempre, las decisiones de nosotras de parte del distrito son basadas en datos. Aquí pueden ver el número de los estudiantes. Y esos son de los resultados de parte de la declaración de intención de regreso a escolar. Como pueden ver, hay 477 estudiantes que van a atender la, van a atender academia de aprendizaje a distancia. 404 son, van a hacer el aprendizaje híbrido en persona. Y aquí puede ver también los números de los estudiantes que requieren transportación del distrito 76. 33 familias, 33 estudiantes no respondieron a la encuesta y como dijimos en la comunicación, si no responden a la declaración de intención a regresar, este, pusimos a los estudiantes de aprendizaje a distancia. La justificación para el plan híbrido, como siempre, la prioridad es nuestra seguridad. El tamaño de clases van a ser más pequeñas. Este, mejor aplicación de las prácticas de mitigación. Y luego el seguimiento, el rastreo de contactos. El aumento gradual va a depender del éxito del aprendizaje a distancia facilitada. Siempre vamos a seguir la orientación o los guías locales. Y por ahorita, este, movimos el, el día para empezar, para el 16 de febrero. Este, porque hay unas de nuestras maestras quien pidieron permisos de ausencias. Son, entonces necesitamos, o también hay jubilaciones que van a pasar. Y renuncias, y necesitamos tiempo necesario para la contracción, el procedimiento y entrenamiento de maestros sustitutos y los recursos necesitados.
So the next few slides, I'm going to hand over to Dr. Draca. I know he and principals have worked really closely on the schedule and what that's going to look like as well as the calendar for the AB schedule. Go ahead, Dr. Draca.
All right, in the hybrid, the hybrid model, the start and end times for the school day will remain unchanged. So it will be similar to what we've seen so far this year and what we've seen in previous years. So Daisy, if you want to translate that, I know there's not language there.
Yeah. Lo que acaba de decir el Dr. Draca es que los horarios no van a cambiar. Estos van a seguir, los horarios escolares seguirán los mismos que aquí los pueden ver.
And then Eric, next slide. So then the hybrid learning schedule is largely just a marriage between in-person learning and remote learning. So you'll see concurrent learning and curriculum for both in-person and remote learners. As Dr. Sharma Lewis had mentioned earlier, students will remain taught by their regular classroom teachers. And the schedule will remain consistent to ensure consistency for our students and our families. So at the bottom of the slide, you'll just see the typical A-day, B-day hybrid schedule. So you'll see that on A-days, Monday and Tuesday, students in alphabetical last name A through L will come in on Mondays and Tuesdays. Wednesdays will be a remote day for all students where we have time to clean and sanitize our buildings. And then on Thursday and Friday, we have students M through Z. There's a slight asterisk next to each of those alpha orders because in order to accommodate specific families who may have multiple last names in their household, we want to ensure that we're able to make exceptions for some of those families and ensure that there's some consistency for them and their students.
Lo que significa el aprendizaje híbrido, y aquí vamos a ver el horario para el aprendizaje híbrido, es que el plan de estudios sería simultáneo para los estudiantes en persona y a remoto. Los estudiantes recibirán su instrucción de los maestros de su salón de clase regulares o normalmente, o como normalmente. Y los horarios semanales serán consistentes para la, para la planificación de estudiantes y sus familias. Aquí puede ver lunes, martes, miércoles, jueves y viernes. Lunes y martes es día A, y esto significa que los estudiantes con el apellido que empiezan de A hasta la L vendrán a la escuela estos días. Y de M a Z, jueves y viernes, para los, viernes para el día B. Y el miércoles es a remoto para todos los estudiantes para poder, para dar chance para el distrito, para que pueda limpiar y sanitar los salones de clase.
And just one other thing Daisy, I'd like to mention is just recognizing that the hybrid calendar is also linked in the presentation there. So you can see that the A-day, B-day schedule has been carried through February, March and the early part of April. So that parents are able to plan long-term over the next several months.
Y también hay el enlace disponible, que puede ver el calendario híbrido, si puede hacer link en el enlace. Y eso da planificación para los próximos meses de los últimos de febrero, marzo y abril, que pueden ver.
Thank you. And you, Dr. Sharma Lewis.
Thank you. And so we'd like to conclude with just looking ahead and what our next steps are. So tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the principals are going to have a chat at 6:00 PM in English and then at 6:45 PM in Spanish for any families that have questions about what the day is going to look like, any of the procedures, any of the operations, any of the safety questions that they may have, school-specific. So that's an opportunity for parents and family members to attend either of those events. And then as Dr. Draca said in his previous slide, the asterisk next to each of the letters for the hybrid schedule, we love that asterisk because it allows us some flexibility. Because as we all know, so many things are changing in this situation and we just have to be flexible. So initially, we had said that ideally, we'd like to have February 8th is the return to in-person learning day. Unfortunately, that couldn't be achieved because of all the changing factors of more students, which is great, coming back to in-person learning. Additional staff taking some time off. And so blending those two concepts together, we thought that we needed a little bit more time to hire staff, to get students in the proper groups, to communicate out to families, giving them ample notice as well as us time, ample time to plan. We have moved the date to February 16th, where students returned in-person learning. That information was shared specifically in a family update yesterday. And then the next six links that you see are detailed return to school roadmap that looks at the calendar, the schedule, what in-person learning is going to look like, what is distance learning going to look like? Again, from the previous slide, the hybrid schedule from now until the middle of April. And then our health and safety plan that Mr. Rogers went over at the last board meeting, as well as each principal's school-specific family letter with their own schedules and the plan for buildings per building. And again, they'll be going over that in the principal's chat tomorrow. And so the week of March 15th, which is the week prior to winter, excuse me, spring break, new declaration of intents will go out to families. And these will be for families who want to change their placement, whether they want to return to in-person learning or go back to remote learning. And then from there, we'll collect that data and start planning ahead for what the remainder of the school year is going to look like. So we have right now, April 9th as when the hybrid model, the current hybrid model will end. And we thought that that would be good for having that two weeks of incubation. If there are families or staff that travel over spring break. Then when we have that data collected from the declaration of intents, we're going to evaluate that data and look at possible change, if there are more or less changes in placement, whether we stay in hybrid or can we increase the days of the week for the remainder of the school year. So, you know, our next time to alter the plan will be after spring break. The good news is with the hybrid model too, we are able to maintain our facilitated distance learning academy as well as provide services for our special ed students four days a week. And those are the students, as we know, that need the most support and the most resources. So by following the hybrid model, we're able to have all of those students maintain the program.
Okay, eso es unas fechas, mirando hasta hacia adelante para mañana, el 3 de febrero. El distrito estará proporcionando una conversación con los directores, a las 6 es la sesión en inglés y a las 6:45 es la sesión en español. De nuevo, este, movimos el aprendizaje en persona del 8 de febrero hasta el 16 de febrero, y eso fue algo que fue comunicado ayer. Y eso es debido a, este, los, a más estudiantes decidiendo, a más familias decidiendo que los estudiantes regresen a la escuela. Y también trabajando con nuestro personal, quien está, quien pidió este, asciencias de no entrar a la escuela. Aquí también puede ver la hoja de ruta de regreso escolar actualizada. Tenemos el horario híbrido disponible también, que de nuevo da planes para el resto de este mes hasta medio de abril. El plan de salud y seguridad, que dimos una actualización en la otra reunión de la mesa directiva. Y luego cartas familiares detalladas por cada escuela, la escuela Diamond Lake, la escuela intermedia de Washtock y la escuela secundaria de Washtock. Y luego para la semana del 15 de marzo, estaremos comunicando una nueva declaración de intención para las familias. Y esto a lo mejor puede dar cambio de ubicación y regreso a en persona. Como vemos, todo está cambiando, pero seguiremos estando en comunicación con todos. Para el plan futuro, para el 9 de abril, actualmente tenemos planeado el modelo híbrido debido a posibles viajes de vacaciones de primavera. Seguiremos evaluando los datos y cambios de colocación. Y esto significa quedar en híbrido o aumentar los días de la, de la semana hasta el resto del año escolar. Y seguiremos manteniendo a los estudiantes de aprendizaje a distancia facilitada y estudiantes de educación especial cuatro días por la semana.
Thank you, Daisy. So that concludes our presentation for this evening. And we'd like to open the floor to the board if you have any questions or comments.
How is the, what's the status search for staff to cover those leads? Have people in place for all of those? Are we still looking?
Currently, we have about half of our leaves of absence. Here's where we have people in place, they're being onboarded within the last phase, so they're being onboarded right now, technology, so on and so forth. And the, we have three at this point that are still in process.
By in process, do you mean still like doing background checks or do you mean still looking to fill?
Looking to fill. Yep, we're still looking to fill them. I will, I'll add a little to that. In that we are, we are doing our best here to partner with parallel education to get some additional assistance from them. And we've reached our, we've reached out to our our networks internally, to our counterparts to try and identify potential candidates for, for the positions that are available. So utilizing our networks.
Do you want me to translate that? Sorry.
Una de las preguntas que uno de los de los miembros de la mesa directiva acaba de preguntar es, ¿cuál es el? En donde nos encontramos como distrito buscando cubrir la, las pedidas de ausencia de las maestras? Ahorita tenemos medio de las maestras cubiertas. Estamos trabajando con una compañía para agarrar esas maestras sustitutas para poder cubrir sus, para poder cubrir el personal.
Dr. Draca. Have you worked with the principals in building time into the schedule to make sure that students are having enough time to like sanitize and get in between classes, do whatever they need to, and coordinate with the students that are at home, just to make sure that our students at home aren't just sitting idle at the computer? Have, have you discussed and how, how will you coordinate those two schedules?
Yeah, I, you know what, I'll probably recruit Mr. Rogerson on this one in terms of the health and safety plan, just to talk about some of the, for the most part, the regular, I should say, the K through five grade levels will not see as much shifting. So there, there won't necessarily be the necessity to move from classroom to classroom, therefore limiting the time that may be necessary to clean and re-sanitize. At the middle school, however, because of that small contingent of students that will be moving from class to class, there will be, there will be some time needed to wipe down desks and so on and so forth. But Mr. Rogers, you want to add a little to that if I'm missing something?
Yeah, no, you were spot on. I'm just going to briefly touch on this, but the middle school level, exactly, that's kind of one of the big problems that's been identified is the amount of time it takes to clean and disinfect rooms in between periods. So we've enacted some processes like putting disinfectant wipes in front of each classroom or learning space. So it's going to be the student's responsibility, they'll take a wipe as they go in the classroom, they'll wipe down their desk and their chair. And then they'll be ready to go. So that allows time to disinfect in between periods itself. It's very similar what Stevenson High School, Mundelland High School is doing. So we've worked collaboratively with them on that. And then like Dr. Draca said, elementary schools, they don't move class to class. And the same student isn't be coming back to the same seat each day. So the A groups, by the time they transition out, will have a cleaning day on Wednesday where the B groups will come in. So before a new student hits the other seat, everything will be thoroughly disinfected.
I'm not sure if Peter, I just see your hand raised on the screen there. So I'm not sure if you're wanting to add anything further.
Yeah, I was, I was going to, if that's, if I may, just to speak to the middle school a little bit, yeah, I'll lower my hand, it was fun, I never tried that zoom. So that was, that was a moment for me. So essentially, you know, we've had, this has been a really nice thing, having FDLA here because we, teachers that are able to have begun to work with those FDLA students to transition them into class and to get an idea of how long it takes to get that routine moving forward. And so I was in a couple of classes today or around a couple of classes today where they were able to do it immediately. Students had kind of learned the routine of it. And just a shout out to our tech department, they're doing a great job providing some really nice supplemental technology. And so teachers are using this time that we have before the 16th, they're doing a lot of training, how they set up their three devices and then how fast they can get with that. And so they've gotten a good hang of it. And what teachers have shared is in a lot of times in the middle school, the first few minutes are a bell, are a bell ringer or an introduction as students are jumping on from the previous class to this one. So from what they, what we are looking at is the time it takes typically to start class. Students that have come in are able to follow the routine of their service while the teacher is able to navigate the, the different screens for instruction. So this has been a very valuable experience and having to the 16th is really going to be advantageous to the middle school to help teachers navigate the routines. And I'm having expectation of how to keep instructional time protected.
Mr. Probel, I see that, is your hand raised or?
It is, I'm sorry, I'm operating off my phone because the internet went down at home. So this is a new, new thing for me. Just wanted to touch base a little bit on the intermediate school, there will be some shifting in classes. We will most likely be, be changing for math class like we normally would, but we also will be having the opportunity to switch for advanced class. Now, our schedule is built in a way that we have sections or blocks of time for our literacy or math, our specials and lunch and recess, so that we can absorb some of the time that's going to take to transition. Recognizing that there's going to be kids at home, you know, what happens during that time? And what we're working on structuring is, you know, as much as I would love to not say the word asynchronous ever again. You know, there will be some time for some independent work where, and it's not long, it's just minutes where where we may have, we might be doing a mass break or something like that. We're going to have to, we're going to have to experience some of those things because there are going to be times We're going to have to, we're going to have to experience some of those things because there are going to be times where the kids that are in person are going to have to participate in things that the kids at home don't have to deal with. That being said, there are some learning opportunities here too, where I've been working with some of our teachers talking about, you know, how, how can we incorporate our kids at home with learning these new environments with the kids that are in person? Because everybody has done school in person before, now everybody has done school remotely, but not everybody has done coming back to school. And so even though we have kids in person who are going to be learning in real time, some new environmental things and how we, you know, go and do the sanitizing stations and, and you know, what the bathrooms routine looks like. The kids at home are eventually going to come back. And so there's some teachable moments there where we could even possibly bring them with, not into the bathroom of course, but you know, just on those trips around the building and learn those new environmental settings, so that when they do come back to school, they are fully aware of what the procedures are. So we're looking to capitalize on some of those things as well.
I think that Mr. Probable and Mr. Cunningham really summarized what is going to be happening in all the buildings. I know our teachers are working really hard to make sure that there is a plan in place for when the students in school don't match up exactly with what is happening at home, just because we do need to take a sanitation or restroom break. But those will all be scheduled and the kids will know exactly what to do. And we have been amazed with our young students' abilities to just jump right back in. So we do think it'll be an easy transition for the kids once we have their schedules and they practice it for a day or two.
I think what we've learned throughout all of this is our staff are so flexible in the sense of this is working, this is not working. So they're very reflective on like, how did the day go? You know, there was too much time taken here or not enough time with this. And you know, there is a misalignment. So maybe they have to go back and they articulate every day, they meet with their teams, they meet with their principals, and I know that they're just quick to adjust. So I think that that's just going to continue as we move forward. Any other questions about the presentation?
I have a few questions. I was wondering if you can explain how the 50% capacity was determined for hybrid, that that would be a safe for hybrid versus like accommodating like a larger group?
Well, go ahead and let, I'm going to let Mr. Rogers handle that because I know he did a lot of the classroom structures. And we looked at each physical space where the kids were coming back and set up desks and chairs. And so I know each space is different, but I'm going to kind of let Mr. Rogers, because he works closely with the maintenance department on that.
Yeah, and it's a great question, Ms. Sullivan. It, it really came down to our space utilization. So classrooms themselves traditionally might have had, you know, 20, 24 kids seating available for them. So we felt to get appropriate spacing in majority of our classrooms, you know, that fit 12, 14 students, 50% occupancy was really our magic number. And really it came down to the lunchroom as well. We have three lunch periods. And if we had 50% occupancy, that's just around 50 students in a lunch period, which is, you know, just bordering on the higher end that the district would feel comfortable with. You know, in one space, it causes us to spread out in a different area. So that may utilize a small gym and a cafeteria and collaboration. Or, you know, adding additional lunch periods and things like that. So this is really our best break even point in terms of maximizing the students in the building and maintaining proper social distancing.
So how big are you anticipating class sizes are going to be?
In this current hybrid environment? I could let the schools probably touch base a little bit more on that, but we're really hovering around 10 and under in most situations.
Yes, at Diamond Lake School, our largest class size is 10 students. And most of our class sizes will be roughly six, you know, with a flexibility. So let's say between six and 10.
The intermediate school, our largest class size, I believe, is 12, but there's only one or two of those. Sorry, I don't have my data in front of me with, just working off my phone here. But most of the classes are around eight and there's actually a few that are smaller. So we're looking at some opportunities there to, to shore that up a little bit.
At the middle school, just because of different section sizes, a band section that combined seventh, eighth is bigger than a sixth grade math intervention section. So it really depends on the sizing. If I had to average a core class, it ranges, the high end would be about 12, which is only one or two sections. The average is about eight to nine. So that, that's generally where we hover, except for obviously PE and some of, and like I mentioned, band looks different than a section of something else. So it's, it's not a pure 50% in terms of the middle school. It depends on what students enrolled and what their sections were that they happen to already be in.
And the last thing I was going to mention too, it's another reason why we're so excited for some of the summer construction. Because there really are the furniture that we have that doesn't allow to maximize, allow us to maximize the space. We have a lot of large tables, a lot of large furniture that we've inherited over the years from other neighboring districts. So once we're able to get some more flexible furniture that allows us to space out a lot more, it's going to really, really give us more flexibility to get students in.
Um, how well, like a student who say they're in their distance learning day versus like their in-person learning day? How is, how's their day going to look different in terms of how education is presented to them? Like is their teacher going to be teaching to them, you know, remotely and to the class on both days? Or does that, are they going to have, be switching between the teachers on, on the days that they're there or not there?
Yeah, so largely what, the way we've designed this hybrid is to, to maximize a concurrent learning experience that's similar for kids both in person and at home. Obviously with roughly 50% of the kids at home, we wanted to keep kids with their similar teachers, with their similar classmates. So hybrid learning is really just a concurrent learning experience for a student. So let's say a student who's in third grade goes to their, their typical teacher on A day, they will be working with their teacher on A day, but that teacher will be working with the kids that are in class and then also working with the kids that are at home. So the educational, the, the educational experience might be varied because they're either at home or in school, but the curriculum should be, should remain consistent. And so that's typically what you will see.
Um, I was also wondering, we have a lot of like late start, early release days on Mondays. Has there been any discussion of switching those to Wednesdays?
We did look at the calendar and we looked at the way those, those early release days fell. And for the most part, they were able to somewhat balance out, meaning that one of them was, one early release was, one early release, sorry, was on an A day, followed by the next early release being on a B day. So we recognized that there was some balance there, although that it might come a week or two later. So that was the reason we didn't want to yet again, change the, change the schedule for that. And then I, you know, again, I would just reiterate that largely the, the learning and the curriculum should be maintaining the same for both the kids who are at home and who are in person. So it will, there will be some consistency there, Ms. Sullivan.
And I just want to comment, if you haven't had a chance to look at the hybrid calendar, it was, I know it was shared yesterday, it's in there. It's, I know it's a lot of information to look at. But we did, as Dr. Draga said, look at all of the days that we counted. So they're pretty much even as we looked at institute days or late start days, excuse me, or early release days or institute days. There's an equal amount that land on A day, B day. So we've mapped it out all the way through April ninth and it's pretty, it's pretty balanced.
Um, how, how are we going to know like on April ninth, if we can accommodate like a bigger group of students, if we can go to full time?
I don't think we'll make that decision on April ninth, you know, as we've been doing all along is keeping the board and the community updated with information that we're getting. So on March fifteenth, we'll send out that initial declaration of intent. We'll collect that data. If there are a lot of changes or there are not a lot of changes, we can kind of look at that and we'll say, all right. Again, we're going to have to look at how is the program working, just as we did with FDLA. The more students we added, it continued to be successful and strong. So we were able to maintain it. We can try the same thing again with full in-person learning. You know, the next three weeks will be very telling, you know, once we get started from March, from February sixteenth to March fifteenth, what does that look like? Are kids doing well? Is, you know, are we able to maintain the learning, the teaching and learning environment, feedback from staff, feedback from families? And I think again, we'll just continue to keep the board updated at our, you know, monthly meetings of how it's looking. And can we handle more capacity? And also it's going to depend on the local metrics. You know, where are we? We're still in tier one mitigation. I know that there's other counties in the area and other regions that have gone into phase four, which again increases and the restrictions get less. So hopefully we'll be at that point and we can evaluate from there.
Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Probable, do you have any more updates on band and choir and how those will be run at this point?
Yeah, um, we're going to, so with the new schedule that started the other week, we went from band and choir, where band was Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and choir was Tuesday and Thursday, both taking place from 11 to 11:30. And it does a couple of things there, you know, sharing, sharing the time with the middle school. We had to find the time that fit with all the band and choir staff that are there. So the 11 to 11:30 slot was the one that we were able to match up with, with the intermediate schedule. We have students that are in both choir and band. So we felt that having them on separate days allowed them to participate in that. Really the only difference that's going to happen with the hybrid model going forward is that that Wednesday is going to be a remote day. So kids that are in person will have, if you're on, if you're an A student and you're in band, you'll get banned on Monday. If you're in choir, you'll get choir on Tuesday. If you're in both, you'll be there on Monday and Tuesday. And then on Wednesday would be a remote band lesson. And then the same thing would happen for the, for the B group on Thursday and Friday.
Well, I guess more specifically, is it safe for the kids to be utilizing their instruments in person on campus?
Yeah, we have actually, we're in the process of purchasing and getting delivered band PPE. I would be, I would embarrass myself trying to describe it to you. But there are different apparatuses for different instruments and some are very specific to the instrument, whether it's a flute or a tuba or whatnot. But we are awaiting arrival of those, I guess, instrument PPE devices is what I would refer to as.
And then what about choir?
Yeah, so let me, I'll, I'll speak to both a little bit, but the guidance was updated on the 10th of January where some of the language that originally come out that kind of discouraged the running of choir really at all was dropped. And so a number of schools that got out, that, that came back for different reasons ahead of us have run both of the programs. And they've been able to do it indoors and safely. So Jess Resols, our band teacher is, has showed us the layout and is able to accommodate almost everyone really for, and really now that we've gone hybrid, that becomes much easier. And students that if we were not able to accommodate, which we think we can, based on certain numbers or spacing, we do have the advisory option if we had to really do that, where a student would not be in the full time when we rotate for lessons. But we really do think we can run the whole thing and Ms. Resols is very competent with it. For choir, the same thing, students have begun to run that indoors inside. So we're looking at using both the choir room and the stage, those are actually both Ms. Borkowski spaces. And so now she's able to use both of those to spread out students and have them face different directions so they can do it. So we've been encouraged by what we've seen with some of our other choir directors that have been able to do this. And so we're moving forward with, right now, we're, those are actually the rooms we're working on right now to arrange, to make sure we can run this effectively. I know I said it at one of my presentations or coffees that we, that choir is kind of still an ongoing thing. I want all families to know that, that could be, that may not look like what it might normally look like. We may have to rotate kids into an advisory study hall if we can't have them all there, because we really can't have them sing anywhere else inside. Because we'll probably be using our spaces. So that's not the perfect answer, but we are very optimistic that at least band will run very, will run and choir, we can make, find a way to make it work.
There's a question in the chat that Mrs. Hale would like me to answer and it's from Jessica Wolf that says, are the kids attending in person essentially in the facilitated distance learning or remote learning from school, but with longer days? So if I understand your question correctly, I just want to clarify that the students who are in FDLA right now or who were also in the fall, they physically attend school, they come to school and they are supervised, but they are participating in the remote learning classes. So they're participating with DLA just like all the, all the other students. Once hybrid starts, those FDLA students will continue with in-person learning and will just be able to do it for four days.
I have a question about, I'll try to phrase this right, but when I look at the hybrid in-person learning, the numbers are obviously very exciting. I can't help but think, and you guys can help me, you know, let me know what you're doing. Are you going to do anything to determine or assess what the students have retained, especially those that are coming from DLA? Or is that, are you going to focus more on continuing to provide, you know, learning opportunities and moving forward rather than evaluating how much, what's been retained from distance learning? Does that make sense?
Yeah, if I, if I think I, and I appreciate that question, we have, we have done both our fall and our winter star assessments at this point. Mr. Lozada, so that gives us a little bit of information. I don't want to say that it's 100% reliable. Because I, I do know that there are some inconsistencies with the remote learning platform. But utilizing our star assessment and then also our local and teacher assessments, that's how we would, that's how we would gauge student retention. And then we would, just like we would any other year, we would try to utilize that data to make instructional decisions. And so, you know, right now in the remote learning platform, based on some of the star data that I have seen preliminarily, we're not growing as a, as a typical year would because of the fact that we are in remote learning. So that I think is expected. And I think many studies and research have shown that that's pretty typical right now. So I think what that requires us to do largely is just make sure that we're meeting our kids where they at, they are at academically and making sure we push, push them forward from, from the spot that they're at now. So then myself, Mr. Probable and the, the rest of the DLT will be working towards looking at what are our possibilities, what opportunities we might have down the road for summer school to make up for some of these, these gaps? And then also looking at a potential for our after-school programming down the road too. So knowing that this situation was going to occur, Mr. Rogers and myself, when we wrote our title grants, we made sure that we put money set aside to make sure that we support these programs more robustly than we may have had to in the past. And so again, we are utilizing that, that assessment data. We're trying to meet kids where they're at. And we're, we're thinking forward in terms of our program design in the, in the late spring and summer to try and meet the needs of some of those slow, some of the slow growth we are experiencing due to remote learning. I hope that answered your question.
It did, it did. It also sprouted another question about whether then during, at some point during the hybrid session, you would be taking another assessment, a purposeful assessment. So talk about that, please.
We will be doing several assessments. As a matter of fact, once we start coming back to school at the end of March, April and May, all of the Illinois assessment suite that exists will be implemented. That includes the Illinois assessment of readiness, that includes the access test for English learners. At the end of the year, we will do a final star assessment to gain a complete understanding of what has occurred over the last year and six months. And then, you know, we have a couple of other minor assessments related to the fitness. And then, you know, we have a couple of other minor assessments related to the fitness, the fitness assessment. And it's only for, I think, three, five and eight, if I remember correctly. But we, we will employ our menu of assessments that will occur at the end of the year. And we will use specifically the STAR to help make decisions about summer school programming. Who needs additional assistance? Who has fallen farther behind? Because we know in terms of equity, that our students that are struggling most are the students that have in the past been struggling most. And so, this scenario has just exacerbated some of the challenges in, in some of our households. So, we will make sure that we, we zero in on those students and, and try to provide them with the supports necessary through our after-school programming and summer programming.
Thank you.
Steve, I have a follow-up question from that. Um, so for the testing that you're gonna administer, because we're in a hybrid model, are you looking to administer that like equally to the students in person? So, or are you going to just administer it like you normally would on one specific day? His reading, one specific day's math? I'm just asking because I, like, I just wonder if being at home impacts how the kids actually perform on those tests? And if, you know, it's worthwhile looking to see if we could give as many kids as possible the tests in person at school?
Yeah, you, there is no doubt about it, Mrs. Hale, that some of the, the tests have shown some inconsistent data based on previous performance. So, without a doubt, the STAR assessment has some inconsistencies. My hope is that when we administer the STAR assessment again come May, that students will be in, in person, we will always be able to assess those students that are in person. So, that's for the, for the one element, which is the STAR assessment, which we plan to give towards the end of May. Now, the other assessments include access test and then the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. Students have to be here in order to give those tests. At this point, the state has told us that those students have to be here. If they are not here, which their choice, they would be just simply, in the state system, would be recorded as not tested. But as far as the Illinois, or excuse me, the STAR assessment, if we, if we have them here, we will assess them here. And if we, if by chance, parents are unwilling to send their kids due to their own personal reasons, then we'll do our best to assess them virtually or remotely.
Okay, and has the state given any follow-up guidance on testing, on their requirements for testing this year? I know that they said that, from what I saw, it just said that they were going to be, you know, required, but I didn't know if there was more leeway or if there was anything had changed.
Yeah, there, there are some updates. Most of the, the updates have just given us a new testing window. So, as I was mentioning, all of the tests have now been pushed towards basically April and May. So, April and May will be testing months. After, you know, a year of remote learning, we'll go right into testing months. And then those will, what the guidance they've given us thus far is that obviously they will have to be in person. But there are also, there are people that are not going to send their children to school during this pandemic. So, those students, as I know it now, for access testing would be slated as not tested, and I cannot speak yet to the IAR. The updates we have been given have just been the new updated testing windows, which were just released, I think, a week ago. We updated that on our assessment calendar and it's on the website. And now we just have to wait to see what we will do with students who are not here to be assessed.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, are there any other questions?
I have another quick question. Have we looked at like, possibly like doing anything to like accommodate as many in-person, like for specials? For example, like my daughter's in fourth grade and on Mondays, they don't have any specials. So, the students that will be there on Mondays might like miss an opportunity to have some hands-on learning.
Do you wanna answer that, Mr. Preble, since it's specific to fourth grade?
Yeah, as soon as I could figure out how to unmute my phone, I apologize. I'm just, I'm like all thumbs over here.
It might be, it might be relevant to more grades. I mean, that's just what I know personally.
As, as the, as the specials block lie, there are four specials that we participate in and we have five sections in every single grade level. So, the every, every day, there is one section that doesn't go to specials. And we're looking at ways to utilize different opportunities during that time, whether that's intervention or enrichment time, so that we can have, have those kids participate in something other than just independent work at that time to get caught up on stuff that they might need to get caught up on. Now, there's several things that, that go into this. One of them is, and, and going back to what Dr. Drack was talking about earlier, and Mr. Lozada's question about, you know, closing those gaps and figuring out where our opportunities are. There, there are lots of opportunities for us to catch kids up from being at home. So, looking at what, what can we do during those times? So, while they may not have a special on that Monday, you know, what are we going to provide for them during that time? And those are things, those are opportunities we're looking at. And to, to lay out an exact what we're going to do right now, we're not there yet. But we wanna see, you know, exactly who our kids are that are gonna be in person so that we can match up staff with that and see what staff opportunities are to, you know, do we have reading interventionists, for example, available at that time that can push in and work on some reading strategies with those kids that are there? So, there's, there's a million different opportunities. It's a matter of just kind of organizing and finding what the best one's going to be. And I think we're gonna be able to make a better decision on that once we get everybody back in the building.
I can speak a little bit about Diamond Lake. We are very excited that we are going to be offering more consistent specials for fifty minutes, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. So, everybody will have an opportunity to have live specials, whether they're in person or they're distance learning. On Wednesday, students will be given kind of a bonus. So, we're gonna put in some incentives to do some movement-related activities, like a gym-related activity or to work on possibly some core academics like sight words or math facts. And part of that is that families, you know, are a little, sharing some feedback that's, you know, all day, every day, wow! And so, since that's a day that everyone's at home, we thought that would be an opportunity to give families a break if they wanted to take it. Or we'll offer kids incentives to do things that are still active and, and parents can keep that secret. We're willing to say that we said they had to, so that's okay too, so that we're balancing that for families. Our students may have the same specials due to scheduling more than once a week. Well, they'll definitely have it more than once a week, but they might have doubled up on, let's say they might get an extra dose of arts or an extra dose of music, just because we're trying to keep those class sizes small. And we know that that's really important, but you know what? The kids will love it either way. That's okay. And when we regroup and we look at coming back and bringing more kids, we'll just shuffle the specials again with the goal of having kids have another dose of something else. So, we are very excited to be expanding that.
And I'll add for the middle school that I'm not sure if this question totally was for us, but we're gonna, I'm gonna answer it. So, we do offer specials every day, but what teachers are having to adjust to do and, and, or I should say, are looking for opportunities to do is having projects and assignments that if they have to be transported or easily transportable, so that student may start the project on a Monday if they're in art, that a Thursday, it's a project that can make its way to school and they can continue it in the building. So, those are the types of dynamics that, that the teachers are adjusting to at the middle school level. The same thing with Fuse, digital media arts is a little bit easier because it's mostly web-based and a lot of what Ms. Klubers has done in Fuse is the same way. So, it, it's just making sure that the project can, can be started in one environment and finished in another.
Great. Does anyone have any further questions? Okay, and then just a reminder that for, for all parents, that tomorrow night, there is the principal's chat. Emails were sent out at six o'clock, it's, will be in English, six forty-five, it will be in Spanish. And you can find the links to that on your website and I'm sure also in your text messages, you will see those. So, we will now move on to the business agenda for the evening. We have three items on the business agenda. The first is not for action, it's just the omnibus vote agenda. And then we have two items that are for action this evening. So, the first item for action is personnel. And I'm gonna go ahead and read that. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake seventy-six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have eight leaves of absence, three resignations, one retirement and two new hires. May I have a motion to approve?
Lozada?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to agenda item C. This agenda item is regarding approving the MOU leave accommodations for 2021. The memorandum of understanding regarding COVID-19-related leave and accommodations between the Diamond Lake Teachers Association and the Board of Education. This MOU provides a teacher with paid administrative leave days for the duration of a quarantine period in the event a teacher must quarantine related to a district incident and remote work is unavailable. And ten paid administrative leave days in the event a teacher is diagnosed with COVID-19 at a time during which the teacher is performing in-person job duties on school property and is too sick to work remotely. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-six Board of Education accepts and approves the MOU leave accommodations 2021 as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Second.
Sullivan? Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion, do we have any items this evening for board discussion?
No, not at this time.
Okay, then moving on to freedom of information requests, we have one and that was fulfilled. Looking at notices and communications, I apologize for the dog in the background. We have, just as a reminder, the Board of Education meeting calendar and the January Diamond Edge newsletter. And then we will move on to public, public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? And again, just like before, please type those in the chat and we will give you a second to do so. Okay, do not see any. So, moving on to others, do we have any others this evening? No others? Okay, well then we will move to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and for the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the body of minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section two point oh six. And for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Candela?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Lozada?
Yes.
Okay, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. Thank you for the presentation and your thoughtful responses to our questions. We appreciate that. For board members, there is a separate link to a Google Meet that you all have in your email for us to meet in closed session. Maybe you wanna take a one to two-minute quick break to get yourself a drink or to use the restroom or whatever you need to do, and we will see you there in a minute or two.
Okay, thank you.